All right, we'll get started. Six oh one P M. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council. Roll call.
Here is here.
Joseph Jones.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Arms.
Here.
Please join me in the plug of allegiance.
Plug allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Sorry, Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Arms.
Yes.
Presentation from Stephanie Opel with Icon. Am I saying it right? Is it Opel? Right. Okay, come on up, Stephanie.
I'm so glad to be here with you tonight. Thank you for inviting me. Hello to those of you who I'm not familiar with and hello to those of you I'm acquainted with. Um, so Stephanie Opel, I serve as the Executive Director of Icon Water Trails. I've been in the role just about six months. So next week it'll be six months, which is very exciting for me. Very glad to be here. Uh, I wanted to just give you a quick update and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about Icon overall or Windsor Heights specifically. So as you know, Icon is really focused on connecting people, communities, and water. We are working to activate more than a hundred and fifty miles. Okay, am I doing right?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Now you are.
Now I am?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so we are working to activate over a hundred and fifty miles of water trails throughout central Iowa. We, there are multiple components to what we are doing. Uh, first and foremost and the most obvious is, is enhancing outdoor recreation opportunities throughout central Iowa, throughout the region. Um, but as part of that, we are really focused on safety. So making sure that we are modifying or adapting uh, some of the very dangerous low head dams that run throughout our community. Those have claimed many lives and, and really don't make some of our rivers passable. So want to be able to take care of that. Also focusing on general safety associated with the water. How do we make sure that people are using life jackets? They understand what their capabilities are and then help upscale and educate them as well. Um, it's an economic development initiative and I'll tell you a little bit about that as well. Um, so we are working to drive new businesses, engagement, um, activation of uh, existing businesses in new ways through this work as well. Um, and we really are a workforce attraction and retention initiative as well. Um, and then beneath all of that is water quality initiative. So we know that we have water quality issues in the state. Uh, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to promote sustainability and conservation practices that will help improve the water quality. So all of that coming together, we're very grateful that Windsor Heights is a key founding jurisdiction that is part of our network. Uh, so twelve jurisdictions presently, we are going out and having conversations with other jurisdictions in the area that could potentially uh, benefit from being a part of Icon Water Trails in Madison County, Warren County, Dallas County, seeing where those opportunities are to be able to continue to promote this effort. Um, a couple of things that are going on downtown projects are uh, some of the ones that get a lot of the headlines and we really think that they are a catalyst for overall growth throughout the region. Scott Avenue, that's our principal point project that is under construction. If you have not been down by there recently, uh, it's very fun to see all the cranes, uh, see the dirt moving, um, they're driving sheet pile, they're doing all sorts of things. So that's about a forty-six million dollar initiative. That will be open for the recreation season in twenty twenty-six. Uh, falling just down river from that is our Harriet site. It's a smaller takeout. Uh, has a great wetland plan for that. We'll start construction on that next month. Has about a hundred different directions scheduled in that one that will be complete. We're working on the design for our Fluor site. So that's just adjacent to Gray's Lake. That is coming along really well. That's about a twenty-seven million dollar project. Uh, well, I know that along with Scott will also have whitewater features. So you'll be able to surf um, down at Scott. The Fluor site will be a little bit less intense, uh, more accessible for families and those who are just kind of dipping their toe into the whitewater adventure space. Um, we also continue to work on our Birdland Prospect and Center Street projects. Center Street is that very large one that will mitigate the, the low head dam at Center Street downtown that, that runs right by the Women of Achievement Bridge. So all of those projects are on time, on budget, and all of that's very good news because once we have activated the downtown sites, we are anticipated to be the second most visited whitewater attraction in the U S. So that's just behind Bend, Oregon. Uh, we anticipate over a hundred thousand visitors coming each year to um, come to the water trails. There's some kind of incredible statistics around expectations and what folks have seen in other places in terms of for every one person that is actually in the water doing the surfing or the whitewater, um, trick kayaking, those sorts of things, you have seven or eight people that are adjacent watching. And to think about all of the growth and development that that can mean and people who could come in and visit and then decide they really like central Iowa and they want to live here. That would be good for us too. Um, so that, that draw is really important to the region. Um, it's also really important to the economic model that we have set up for Icon Water Trails. So that investment and that revenue that is generated from those downtown sites will go back in to the full region to be able to help with improvements um, to other sites. So very excited about that. Thinking more regionally, we do have fifteen current active sites. Um, we just released and hopefully some of you saw some of the, the information around that or were able to join us. We just did um, a virtual unveiling of our regional economic impact report. Uh, and so we had some consultants look at data uh, from a six-month period in twenty twenty-two, so April to October, kind of that high recreation season. Um, and looking at what the visitation was to those sites and what that meant for economic impact. Found that to over two hundred and fifty thousand people visited those four, there were two hundred and fifty thousand visits um, to those fifteen sites during that six-month period. That resulted in an eleven million dollar direct economic input for a total of twenty million dollar economic output. Um, so you, so resulting in, you know, sustaining around a hundred and ten jobs, um, three point four million dollars equivalent in wages. And um, one point three million dollars in state and county tax uh, that came in. So very excited about that. Knowing that that is just one season of a small slice of what is really going to be activated throughout the Icon Water Trails Network and it goes beyond that too. Um, their spending profile. So folks that live within ten miles of those sites spent on average about twenty-five dollars associated with their water trails visit. Folks who traveled more than ten miles spent about eighty-six dollars associated with their water trails visit. So this was all cell phone data pings and they refined and did all the, all the magic modeling. Um, but it's great because it's not a forecast, right? It's real information, real visits that we can see what those users are doing. Um, and about seventy percent of those folks that visited were actually in the river. So they were doing inward activities. The others were just adjacent to that shoreline. Um, which is exciting too for some of our splash and play and, and different things too. We know those are, are really attracting people down to the water's edge. Um, so that's kind of what's going on. Uh, I have, as I said, I'm going out and connecting with um, new jurors, potential new jurisdictions, but also getting to come out and say hello to our uh, current participating jurisdictions and make sure that you all have um, great awareness on some of the opportunities that are available for members. So one of the things um, that should have come to, to Adam recently, um, and uh, would have come to Michael too, um, is our on-water maintenance. So we're getting ready to under to work with all the jurisdictions to understand what maintenance needs there are so we can go ahead and prioritize those and start be a, being able to provide some funding. So we are partnering with Iowa Rivers Revival to be able to do some trash cleanup events this season. Um, we are contracting with the Conservation Corps. We'll have about five or six weeks of their time, a full crew to come out and do cleanup. And then we'll have some opportunities potentially for um, some work with any heavy equipment that's required for some of those larger projects. So if you all know anything you need on Walnut.
I think Jason just met with some of your staff on that.
Did you just say the call?
Yes, I did.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, him and I took a drive up and down uh, Walnut Creek. We had got kind of a game plan together and he said they were looking for a contractor and I kind of showed him some of like the high points of work.
Perfect. Great. So what, once we get that in, we'll be able to go through that and identify what we can do this year. Um, we do have a limit to the budget on that. So we're not able to do every single thing for everybody every year, but we'll go through and prioritize that. Um, and then look at those draft pickups and participation with Iowa Rivers Revival and all of those pieces too. So excited about that. Um. We have our public art grant that is currently open. So that is in partnership with Bravo. Um, so that is for public art installations that go at Icon access points. Um, so that is another opportunity and we are getting ready to uh, put together our spring uh, Mid-American Energy Proposal. So Mid-American Energy gave a five million dollar endowment to Icon. And twice a year we release a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to help with access points. I know Windsor Heights applied in the last round um, and provided a good application. Um, didn't quite get the, the funding this time, but we're hoping that you all will apply again. I know I'm working to schedule a meeting with.
And while you're so close, you should go down to Colby Park and see all the construction work going on there and how a nice uh, water access point would fit in.
Yes. I was. Yeah, I was just looking at your master plan um, earlier today and I've been down to Colby Park and it's a great place. I have not been down um, recently, so I will on my way out. Definitely stop by there. Um, so talking with Bolton and Mayne on, on your behalf soon and making sure that we're giving you all the feedback to be able to have the, the best proposal um, that you can for that. So hoping um, to, to see an application there. Uh, and then, you know, we also just want to make sure that, that you all know that if there's anything that's going on related to, you know, Colby Park or other things that you're doing associated with the water trails, we want to make sure that we are helping share that message too as well. So we have our very strong Icon brand and social media and all those pieces. So Katie Hartman, our Marketing Director, uh, is always happy to be able to coordinate with you if it's a blog post or something like that. You want to talk about improvements or other things like that, we're happy to share that story too. So I think I've probably shared a lot and taken enough time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Stephanie, I, I just wanted to say a welcome, first of all, and just let you know that um, the interview that you did on our show was wildly successful and accessed from all points in the United States and other countries. So it was really exciting to be able to um, learn more about Icon. Uh, my question is, uh, the other outlined jurisdictions, is that a tough sell? Uh, because it's so Hope County centered?
Um, I would say that people are really excited about it. Um, so for example, if you think about Madison County and you think about Winterset, they have a D N R designated water trail. It goes under a couple of covered bridges. It's beautiful. It's great, right? There is an opportunity there. I think one of the challenges that I have heard recently is related to the tax levy um, issue that is, is coming up and, and as I'm sure you all are, you know, very focused on budgets and thinking about that, especially for some of the, the growing communities. Um, there is a question about that, you know, downtown and are we really focused on downtown? I have been really making sure that I am talking about what that downtown investment, investment means in terms of revenue generation and how we are using that as a catalyst to be able to support the trends overall. Um, because I really think that the folks who sat around the table to be able to come up with the governor's structure were really intentional and thoughtful about that. Um, but, but yes, um.
I get it.
Some of the big projects.
Sure.
If, that's where we get a lot of, a lot of the press is around those too.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You all know how to get ahold of me. If there's anything you need or any questions you have, reach out anytime. Um, and glad you're connected with Cole and we're all working to do this thing and have more people come over here and use the grid amenities. So we'll be looking forward to that project coming online.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you.
Item four A, Public Hearing on Proposal to Enter into General Obligation Corporate Purpose Loan Agreement.
Move second.
Uh, Rochelle?
Yeah. Um. Uh, we are just proposing to enter into the G O or General Obligation Corporate Purpose Loan Agreements in a principal amount not to exceed ten million for the construction of Seventy-third Street and Phase One and sixty-eight Streets South. Engineering estimates have come in much lower than the tongue, ten million, but we put this mountain to the agreement in case the bids come in higher. And the resolution authorizes a property tax levy for the F Y twenty-five fiscal year that will generate two hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and one dollars for the payment of the debt service on this series twenty twenty-four bonds.
All right, um. Roll call and opening the public hearing.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
All right, um, anybody online? All right, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
Resolution of Resolution Number twenty twenty-four twenty, a resolution taking additional action on that series twenty twenty-four bond.
Second.
Uh, discussion or questions for Rochelle?
Um, I have a question. Uh, I remember from previous bonds that we had paid um, paid those down more quickly than they were scheduled to. Is that part of the plan from?
That we front-loaded them?
Yes, thank you.
Um, but this time we're not front-loading because we have the, we have other uses for the dollars. So um, we're going to go ahead and do a schedule. I think it's a fifteen-year schedule. It might be one to me. Once we, once we actually um, sell the bonds, then we'll decide how long we're going to go out. But um, we're not going to front-load this time because we have other uses for.
Perfect.
Seventy-third. Generally.
Seventy-third, yeah, phase two.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
Or C, Public Hearing on Proposal to Enter into a General Obligation Park Improvement Loan Agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rochelle?
So all this is actually, um, what we're doing is taking the um, funds from University Avenue that have, that are left over. Basically, um, we didn't need all the funds that we used, that we borrowed for Seventy-third and we're repurposing those to use them for uh, Colby Park instead. So it's money we already have in house, it's sitting in an account and now we're just repurposing it so we can use it again. Or something else?
So you said it was for Seventy-third Street?
I'm sorry, university.
Okay. That's, I was like, wait a minute here and now I'm confused.
Looked down since it's been seventy-third. It's university extra funds from university. And we can only use it for two projects. So um, we could use them for Seventy-third. We don't need that right now. We don't only need it for the park. So that's what we're going to use for. You guys agree?
All right, um, roll call on uh, opening the public hearing.
Yes. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
Uh, public comment or discussion? Hearing none, motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Roll call.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
Or D, Consideration of Resolution Twenty twenty-four twenty-one, a resolution taking action on those bond proceeds.
Move second.
Uh, additional discussion or questions for Rochelle? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
Thank you, Rochelle. Item five, Public Forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes.
Bob Bishop, one-one-two-eight-sixty-four, the Union Committee. I want to thank the council for the time this time provided it and that. Don't think it's probably a good thing to you that it didn't provide events. I'd like to begin with a quick comment on the topic of reflection. Sometimes on life's journey, it's beneficial to look back. It's an opportunity to learn from our past successes and mistakes. And when we reflect on what we've achieved, we can identify what worked well and what hasn't. We, this, this can help us make us better decisions in the future and avoid making the same mistakes at the end. Reflection can also give us a sense of perspective. I don't think any of the city staff in this room today were here in twenty seventeen. However, I believe twenty seventeen was a seminal year. In February of twenty seventeen, passed the company's city's complacency plan. It was approved and I'd like to read a quote from it that in my eyes sums up its guidance. Quote, "For its ongoing vitality, Windsor Heights must capture the imagination of residents of the metro through a strong positive identity." City governance in twenty seventeen could be summed up in one word. Controversy. Controversy among city officials, its residents, the sidewalk controversy, the sign controversy, the speed camera controversy. The summer of twenty seventeen was also a year when a young man knocked on my door. He took time to visit with me and answer some very tough questions. If you know me and the career I've had, you would know that I'm not easily impressed. But I was impressed with this kid and I thought, he gets it. Jumped to twenty twenty, COVID. We completely replaced the entire council. We have a retiree filling in as the city administrator. It's short order. We lose the finance director, city clerk, fire chief, the police chief who basically wrote the book that they guys done today and likely the best public works of director we could, we could have had for the city. And yet somehow this council was able to replace these resource losses with what appears to be well-called by individuals. Rebuilding streets and infrastructure, the university redesign, Colby Park. Most importantly, changing the perception of Windsor Heights by creating a strong positive identity. So I want to personally thank everyone on the council who has sacrificed their most valuable commodity, time to help us bring about these positive changes. Lastly, I believe every team has a strong leader. So today I'd like to present an award to the young man who knocked on my door. Mayor Jones, for outstanding performance and a steadying hand at helm in guiding Windsor Heights through a challenging time.
Thank you.
The last gift Mayor Jones got was a, a piece of the curb. So this is a big, big step up.
Thank you, Bob. I really appreciate that. I still do have um, like two years left on my term, but I, I really, I really appreciate that.
That really means a lot. Thank you.
Um, I don't know if anyone can uh, beat that other public comment. Is there any other public comment? All right, uh, consent agenda.
Um, can we move uh, the minutes from the council meeting on March fourth? Standalone item?
Yep. Uh. Four A?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Or six A.
Six A?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so um, with the exception of six A, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Gary?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Arms?
Yes.
All right, uh, six A, the minutes from the regular city council meeting on March fourth.
I think it was included in um, uh, what you signed, Mayor Jones, but if we could make sure that the minutes reflect that it was to have good faith effort or good faith conversations on the solar panel monument sign. The other items, I think the conduit and the fence were non-negotiables, but I think it was the solar panels and the um, monument that they would engage in good faith conver, or discussions with city staff. I think the monument sign? Or, you know, including Windsor Heights feel, I believe is what it was into the, the signage.
Uh, there was a little bit of discussion, I guess it would have been early last week on the wording for that resolution, trying to make sure we're matching council's intent and, and Adam Straits been out of office. The latter half of the week. So I don't know that mayor has seen a final version of that, but I'll, I'll read you what is currently proposed in that and what's been sent to Casey's presently as an unsigned version of that. Uh, skipping down to the points, um. City staff recommendations is what it's been planned here is continuing the fence along the east side of the property, easement for public art determined by available space and sightline. Have continued discussions about installing solar panels, include monument sign to match aesthetic of university corridor, include conduit runs for future E V chargers. Those are those four additional items that were discussed uh, in some fashion by staff at the previous council meeting. So if you want any revisions to that, uh, we can.
Did you just want to say in good faith? Is that what you were?
Yeah, I, I know that that was part of what came up at the dais here. And so I don't know, I guess I'd look to Aaron. Do we need to specifically spell out that it's good faith conversations about the solar panels or?
Well, they're your minutes, so.
Yeah, I think they should say what you want them to say.
I'm looking for the guidance that if they go, nah, we decided against it, that we can come back and say, ah, it is good faith discussion, not just, yeah, we discussed it, we're not doing it, right?
I think what, what, what it's saying is that you said that from the dais and so that should be reflected in the minutes, right? I think you're stressing the good faith.
Yes.
You said that multiple times at the dais. And so I think that you want.
From him, but yes.
Yes, okay. You want that to be reflected in the minutes and so therefore it should be reflected in the minute.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Good.
Yes. So motion to approve with that amendment?
With that amendment?
Yeah.
Second.
I think this might be my first motion, actually. Some people hog them all.
You're welcome.
Joseph, yes. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, seven A, Discussion on Flood Response Plan. Chief Rowe, who is not at all retired apparently.
No, no, but I have been around since the, I was talking to Chief Reeves. I, I introduced myself to being around since the Al Hunter days, like how many people would, would remember that and interesting thing. Yeah, great, great leader. So.
My childhood.
Childhood. Um, yeah, my name's Rick Rowe, retired last May as a fire chief in Clive. And I've been around there in part-time capacity for about ten years and then chief for about twenty-four years. And with that, um, saw a lot of, of Walnut Creek floods that, uh, you know, impacted Clive and Windsor Heights and, and Des Moines and on, on downstream. So um, I do want to thank and, and tell the council mayor that I appreciate the opportunity to help um, work with the city staff and, and pull together a, a flood response plan for, for Walnut Creek. And um, tonight I just really kind of want to walk you through that. Uh, we have done three uh, staff trainings so far. Tomorrow morning, we're doing a tabletop exercise in here. And, um, everything on here is labeled draft. We're still making changes as we go through it and think about things, just making little tweaks. Uh, so hopefully the outcome is that, uh, you're, you're doing the things and organized to keep your community safe, because it's not a matter of a potential flood again, some, at some point it will, and, and um, I did do a little bit of math, and since 2004, seems like right at 20 years, there's been 19 different flood events. Uh, with Walnut Creek. Some of those were small, just things that can get some, some city officials concerned about water levels. And some of them were much bigger, so that averages about one a year. And, you know, knock on wood, but it's been 2018 since we've seen a flood in the area, so. Um, again, it'll, it'll happen sooner or later, and, um, I've worked extensively with the city administrator and the directors from Public Works and Police and Fire, and I think we've got a pretty good plan, but certainly invite you guys and, um, certainly want you to shoot holes in it or ask questions. I'm going to wait around until after the meeting, but we want to make sure it's a plan that's, um, well positioned to serve Windsor Heights the next time the floodwaters come up. One of the, the kind of interesting things to look at is when Walnut Creek floods, you know, where's that water coming from? And you can see that it's, um, coming from Dallas Center and up north of 44. And all of that, uh, all that floodwater is coming right down through Walnut Creek. That outline is the, um, the watershed boundary for Walnut Creek right before it merges with North Walnut Creek at 73rd University. Uh, we know that's, um, you know, that you can see the city boundary outline, so you know, probably two-thirds of that is suburbanized, uh, there's a lot of growth to go and different growth and changing weather conditions, patterns that we're seeing. Probably going to see some more impactful other things. Let me go to the next one. So then kind of the next piece of the puzzle that we need is, we need to know, we need an idea of how high the water is going to go. And where we pull that from is, there's a series of different, um, stream gauges, one of which is at I-80. And that is the one at which, um, the Weather Service will make a flood prediction for, um, how it's essentially going to impact Clive and Windsor Heights. There's another one down on 63rd Street, but that's a little too far out in fact, so the Weather Service will make a prediction as to how high the water will go at I-80 and at what time they believe it will crest. If we can do the next slide. But we know how high it's going to go, then we kind of want to know, well, how does that water disperse across Windsor Heights? And we've got inundation mapping that is coming from two sources. One is back in 2010, the city of Clive did a study, and in that study they did where they, um, they shot, um, LiDAR, so some kind of laser system lays out where the water will go based on different elevations. That overlapped into Windsor Heights, so we've got good information from that. There's also the Iowa Flood Information Center that's located at the University of Iowa, and they have inundation modeling as well. It's not as extensive as what, uh, Clive's provided, uh, but it's filled in some holes from us, and it's also going to help us look at, uh, North Walnut Creek as we try to figure out how it's going to impact. But we put these pieces together, say, well, what are we going to do? We know how high the water is going to get at I-80. Then we plug that into our flood response plan, and we, uh, built three different layers, kind of a, a lower level one, a middle layer, level two, and then a higher level three where things are going to get real serious. In that plan, there's really three big items that we take care of or address. One is evacuating, trying to keep people out of harm's way. Number two is road and trail closures. And number three is, uh, public information, getting good timely information out to the public. Uh, in the plan, you'll see that we basically started south and worked our way north, uh, as we kind of chucked the city to say, okay, what's the water doing in this area and how are we going to respond? So eight different areas working south to north. So a quick peek at the inundation mapping.
Could I, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question about, um, the previous slide? When you're working south to north, I'm thinking the water is coming, maybe I don't understand what your planning areas are, or maybe it's for, for planning, but the water is coming from the north and moving to the south, so that seems counterintuitive to me?
Oh, I see what you're saying. We just simply needed a way to divide the, the city up to say, okay, for this, for this section of the city, where are we going to look at and relate?
Okay.
One, map two, map three. But yeah.
Okay, so it's really just dividing the, the commu-, okay, fair enough. I just wanted to, I didn't know if that was priority or anything like that, so, okay, thank you.
We'll just do some quick scans of the inundation areas, and we can see for each area just how the, the different levels get larger. This is the area, uh, again, starting to the south, so we're just south of 235. And you're looking at, um, you've got the Dog Park and the, and the Storage Mark area. See level one, you're, you're kind of impacting the, the storage area. And the Dog Park, you know, level two, you start impacting the, um, uh, residential area a little bit to the east. Then that gets a little bit more significant on level three. Um, there is a road, um, through there that's mostly industrial, and you'll see when we talk about road closures, um, that basically we have West Des Moines blocking that off to the south. We work our way just north of 235, and you can see, uh, Colby Park. Um, and just a little bit of residential impact on level one. And as you work your way up into level two and level three, um, you've got much more. From a residential perspective, this is the area down around Colby Park where you've got the most impact citywide in any of the, the different areas.
Rick, how are those equated to flood, flood? Like 100 year, or what, what levels are those?
Good point. Level three encompasses 500, 150. Um, the 25-year flood, uh, is encompassed in level two. And kind of, and that's a great question too, because in, in all the flooding that we've seen with Walnut Creek specifically, we've never seen anything over a 25-year flood. So, there's a lot of people in the communities that aren't necessarily aware of this. A few years ago, uh, when FEMA redid their maps for when you've got to pay flood insurance, uh, woke some people up along Walnut Creek that weren't aware of it, now they are just because financially it hits them hard. But when you talk about your public safety responders or your city officials trying to manage an event like this, we've never seen a really big flood with Walnut.
Ninety, 93 didn't?
No, that was more, uh, that wasn't necessarily flash flooding, that was the bigger, um, flooding.
On the dam.
The raccoon.
Yep, okay.
Now, I will say in 2018, the last big flood we had, North Walnut Creek, coming down at 73rd Uni, that hit a 500-year level. Uh, but as far as Walnut Creek, the bigger creek, we've never seen anything over 25. Uh, work our way north, uh, so we're just south of University Avenue. Um, you see that there's not much impact until you hit level three. And you start taking water on around, uh, Apple Valley and, um, a little bit into the, the Sam's parking lot. One of the things to, probably to point out as we look at these inundation maps is you kind of have to know the tools that you're working with. What the inundation mapping doesn't reflect is, um, sometimes it'll make it look like it's over a building, and it's not. Um, and sometimes it'll make it look like it's over the road where a bridge is, it really doesn't reflect bridges. So as you look at these, just kind of keep that in perspective. It's basically doing a, a cross-section of the ground, so some points, um, at level two, you can see there's a little bit of water right here on 73rd. And that's just a low point, so normally there wouldn't be water there unless there was a way to get there, or if there was a storm sewer that's backing up for some reason. So again, just understand your tools and what you're looking at with some of these, some of these maps. You go north of university, um, have a little bit of a problem at level two, uh, right north of the Heating and Cooling, a hot place. And, uh, level three starts to get problematic here at the intersection. Uh, Forest Court to Reedy Avenue, it just, as it gets larger, it kind of encroaches to, on the homes there to the west. Um, but overall doesn't cause a large problem through that. Uh, we go north from Reedy to College, again, it doesn't cause us a large issue other than, of course, the Longley Creek, um, even before we get into level one, you've got, uh, uh, Public Works working on shutting down the trails, but as far as its roads or, uh, impacting buildings in this area, it really isn't. Uh, north of, of college, not much of an issue from a building or street perspective. And we get up by Hickman's, um, that large building there. The building is fine, but there's a lot of impact around the parking areas. Any questions on just the base inundation mapping and what that looks like and how that lays out? Good? About evacuation areas? Uh, we've gone through and looked at, uh, where the water is impactful on the different areas and outlined where we would do evacuations. The evacuations, um, you really can't make a mandatory, uh, but you want to encourage people, hey, be, the water's coming up, you need to be concerned, at a minimum, you need to be prepared to evacuate quickly if the water's coming. As we work our way north, you can just see the different levels and, and how those impact, um, just the volume of notifications that need to be done.
How much of the notification would fall on our responsibility versus, I mean, I'm thinking about other flooding events that have happened, the news, you know, obviously keeps people updated on, uh, evacuation orders, and, um, when it's at the state level, there's been statewide notification of stuff. How much of that responsibility falls on Windsor Heights staff?
Um, I'm going to say I think you, you want, you want to control that, so whether it's press releases that go out that then the media can feed, or there's another system that's, um, it's a mass phone notification system, sometimes called a reverse 911, called Alert Iowa, to where literally one of your directors or the city administrator can log in, and the templates are already written, we'll show you one in a little bit. And it's really just, you just click it and send it. So any landline or anybody that's signed up and, and put their cell phone into the system, uh, would get a message with very accurate, very timely information. I ran into an issue in Clive once where we were trying to rely on the dispatch center. And in no fault of theirs, but they were just getting slammed, and it took them about an hour to get one of those messages out. So that's why we've worked with, um, emergency management to get, uh, approval for a few folks, uh, within the city to be able to launch those messages quickly.
Awesome, thank you.
And I'm assuming that our staff, since we've kind of changed a few here, there, everywhere, um, that we already have that approval in place, and we know everything is okay.
Uh, road and trail closure, again, the trail closures really happen early, Public Works is, is is there just situationally aware that the waters are coming out or handling? So as we lay it south of 235, um, you can see at level one, you've got one, uh, street closure. At level two, it encompasses a couple, and at level three, it gets a little larger. One of the things that we've done as well is, um, in the, in the red one, this one, it's I-235 and it's 73rd Street, we've identified areas where there's a high priority for us to have those road closures staffed. Because believe it or not, the public will do silly things, and ju- just because there's a barricade there that says road closed floodwaters, they will still drive around it. And then you're tying up a 911 dispatcher and public safety personnel, so we, some of those that we just can't afford for people to get around and, and get stuck and cause problems and, and suck up public safety resources. Um, 235 would obviously be coordinated by the DOT, and 73rd at this location, that's Office Park, would be coordinated by West Des Moines, but we've encompassed it into, into this one. Again, as we, as we work our way up at level one, we've got a, a few road closures down by Colby Park. And at level two, that expands out a little bit, and then you've got another 235 offering. And again, it's, um, some high priority ones would be staffed with somebody to turn people around. Away north, really not much of an issue until you get up, um, to get just some trail issues and trail sidewalk issues there. Uh, public information, um, this is an example of, of trying to get good information out. Um, when you sign up for Alert Iowa, you can choose whether you want voicemail, email, text, or all three. Text is limited to 160 characters, which is kind of there's a flash, flash flood warning, uh, for Walnut Creek. Uh, go to the city website for more information. Voice and email are a little more detailed, uh, we're kind of telling them, hey, in this particular example, this is level two. Flood stage at I-80 is nine feet, and we're telling them that, uh, the water's predicted to be that 13.1 to 13.9. So hopefully that gets people's attention. It always refers them back to the city website for more information. Try to encourage them not to call 911 unless you really need assistance. And then, of course, of course, call it. The area there, the map, it's a little bit bigger than what the evacuation areas were, there's people are going to be impacted by, uh, travel. Uh, so we, we expanded that just a little bit, but that is the area of Windsor Heights that would receive those notifications through, uh, Alert Iowa. A couple of, uh, city facilities are impacted. Uh, we, we did get a little more specific with this one, and rather than use the level one, two, and three, we actually used the the feet projections, um, out at I-80. So Public Works, if it's going to hit 12 feet, they've got to get some equipment out of there, and if it's going to get over 13 feet, they've got to raise some stuff up and try to protect some stuff in their facility. With the Community Events Center, uh, just about 11 feet, uh, canceling any events, and if it's over 13 and a half feet, securing utilities and doing some kind of flood protection on the doors. At this point, that plan is sandbags. These were just some examples of some different, um, kind of some quicker, uh, materials that you can use to, to improve the building. And, uh, but right now the plan is sandbags. Um, this is a, a dashboard that we built for this. Imagine an emergency operations center set up in this room. This is where somebody can track all of the different things going on, so at any one point in time, you can look at this dashboard and understand which roads are closed, which ones have been reopened, um, which one of the areas, the door-to-door notifications have been completed. Uh, we can track on this, there's a way to track, um, with the stream levels, we can kind of track where it's, on which gauges, it's still going up, it's still coming down, and do some projections about when the, when the crest might hit Windsor Heights. So, just a good situation management tool. And I, I will say that, uh, again, the one piece that we're missing is we're trying to get some better information on North Walnut Creek and how that impacts the city. And continuing some dialogue with the University of Iowa, and, um, that's kind of going to be phase two, as we try to get our runs around that. But any, any questions or suggestions that you have on, on any of this planning so far?
Rick, nice, nice program, um, and in depth. I, I was caught by your comment about individuals going around the barricades. Because, uh, that public safety issue is really, really important. I, I lost a good friend in 2018, in Larry Kotler, uh, who was a vitality in Des Moines, as a matter of fact, and so, yeah, this is, this serious stuff.
All right. Rick, um, so as far as feedback from council, I think this is the first time we've, you know, actually, it's been provided to council as far as feedback, and what are the next steps as far as, um, staff looking at things, and then as far as elected officials potentially giving feedback, how, what's? staff looking at things and then as far as elected officials potentially giving feedback, how, what's, what's, what's the timeline, I suppose?
Well, at this point, we've got a tabletop exercise for tomorrow. We've got plans for annually, kind of going through this process as we have staff turnover so that we know what to do. Public Works has already started on updating and adding some additional barricades, just making sure that we've got enough barricades to place in all the locations that's been identified as part of this process. So I think the intent tonight was really make council aware if there are any questions, concerns, gaps in what Rick has done, helped lead, to lead us through, which, thank you again, Rick. You've been a great expert in kind of leading us through this process, since there's a lot of new faces here. We'd certainly take that feedback and incorporate it into it, but I think this is close to the end of the journey as far as the planning process for how we would respond to, to a flood event. And so we actually were to get to a flood event and then really implement this plan. Document, I think, is a big thing. Part of our process going through this was looking at what information we had from previous flood events. And, you know, part of it is there hasn't been a hundred-year flood events in recent times, but we don't know exactly where those inundations will go, other than the mapping equipment that we have, which is still imperfect, although substantially better than where it was ten, fifteen years ago.
I think your plan is always, even though probably around this time of year, after you go through staff training and tabletop exercises, you tweak it every year, but you're always thinking of things. So the plan is kind of always perpetually being updated with probably a formal update every spring after, after the training.
I guess my only comment is that I wish that, you know, we would have had this presented to us a little bit before we're so far down the road. Not that we have, not that there's anything that I really saw as I read through this. But, you know, just some of us have been around for a lot of the flooding and have a little bit more insight as well than some of the, the staff that have been here for a year or two, you know, that, that would be my only statement was, you know, it would be nice just to have been able to have read this prior to, but I don't, yeah, on my quick glance, I didn't see anything that I was like, oh, this is missing, but.
If you do, by all means, you know, get it to us. I think we've, we've changed the plan after every little staff training that we've done. So very happy to integrate the ideas or, again, just things that if you think we've completely missed it, we'll certainly entertain that.
This is Teresa, I was just gonna comment that, because I've been through a couple of major flood events here, or at least the last two major flood events in Windsor Heights. And the first one, we didn't even, like, our staff didn't even respond. So the fact that we've come this far is pretty amazing. And I know our last kind of approach to this was we, we put together a communications plan on how we were gonna respond. And I know that was in our communications plan. So Adam and team just kind of know that that might be somewhat, something that we probably need to update in, in reference to this plan, so that there are two contradictory approaches, if somebody were to look in a different area and see something that's not, does it connect with this plan? So just make sure that that's consistent. But otherwise, I think, well done and thank you. And I, and I think this is really a great document, a great plan for, for us. And I'm proud that we are, we have something, we, we have a way to, to respond and because we haven't in the past and it was a hot mess, and so this is good stuff, thank you.
That's to put it mildly.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, seven B, consideration of professional services agreement with Boltland Mink for salt shed construction.
Second.
Jason, Andy, Justin, AJ.
Jason, Andy, you wanna give a quick update on just where we're at in the process? Then maybe we can hand it over to Justin to talk through what the contract looks like and what we're trying to achieve through that. But we're still pretty early in the, the design process, but hoping to get the, well, we will get the project done yet this year before snow flies again.
Right, Jason Robert, Director for the City of Windsor Heights. So I've really put Andy kind of in the lead in this. Andy and I, we worked pretty close with this, as we discussed earlier this winter about our salt sheds, and we had the analysis done. And it was, you know, deemed structurally not in sick condition. But, you know, after having that discussion, we figured that, you know, we could make it through this season. And which we did. And if anybody would like to come down to the shop, you're more, more than welcome to come down and look at the structure so you can actually firsthand actually see what's going on with this building. There's no, basically no saving this building. So the option is, is basically we just go to a big, like, tent awning roundabout hoop building where we come in and we'll, you know, basically have demolition, have the carlo or somebody come and demo everything, jackhammer out all the concrete, lay new down concrete, put barriers in and put our hoops, hoops up, and then we'll put a gate in front of the door. So this is gonna actually, is gonna help a lot on, you know, the salt not eating away and deteriorating, you know, concrete and everything. As we all know, salt is basically eats away, no matter what you do, it's just kind of impossible.
So it's, it's a timely presentation because we are in the hundred-year floodplain with the salt shed today. It will remain in the hundred-year floodplain, but it'll be hardened, the structure will be hardened with that flood gate that essentially goes in front of it. And part of the reason we really need to bring BMI into this process is, is Andy's been doing some research. We're, we have a fairly tight space down there at Public Works. And, you know, if you start changing the grade surrounding that building, you're losing a lot of the storage space. And so we're trying to efficiently design this to, to minimize the impact to other usable space here by elevating it to the extent that's possible without losing that additional storage space. And so there's some work for BMI to do here as far as design, where we would have any retaining walls and how to get this, the project to a place where it's gonna meet all the flood requirements that we have out there. But at the end of the.
Can I, can I just piggyback off of that, please, to Adam and Jason? Yeah, so as I guess Adam had mentioned, it was kind of a timely presentation from Mr. Rowe there regarding the flood plan and flood response. So it, the Public Workshop in the Salt Commodity Storage Building is in the floodplain. So in order to keep it, as I guess Adam was kind of touching on the location of where the shed is now versus bringing in a bunch of fill, changing the location down at Public Workshop. It's most feasible to keep it there, but in order to keep it there, the, the building itself would have to be dry floodproofed is what it's called. So BMI would be tasked with, upon approval of this resolution, to oversee the structural engineering of the building itself from floodwaters or flooding events, as well as the installation of, I think Rick had an example of the flood barrier that would go across the opening to keep the floodwater out so that the salt wouldn't leach into the floodwater and, and we'd avoid the, the pollution. So everything's gotta be elevated to a specific height, which is outlined in the firm panels by FEMA. So we're still on track, I guess, what we initially thought last fall. Budgetary wise, it's just that we need some engineering work done on it with the hydrostatic pressures of the floodwater, make sure everything would be solid and hold up in the flood, in the event that there is a flood.
Can you remind us what the cost?
Nineteen thousand.
Well, nineteen for, for this, but for the, the construction of the shed, I, I can't remember how much that was.
Yeah, we had anticipated approximately two hundred thousand dollars for the entire project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was that, was that with, was that anticipating design costs or was that just the shed itself alone?
That's all the materials and everything, and that's, we have asbestos in it, so somebody's got to come in, take that all. What was that, Andy, about twenty-five hundred bucks there?
Yeah, for the asbestos abatement, yes, that's approximately the cost on that abatement. There is not a whole lot of asbestos there, but it will need to be removed prior to demolition.
So are we talking two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred thousand?
No, this, this, this cost, the design and engineering cost would be lumped into the grand total of two hundred thousand dollars. Total, yes, yep. The, the, the building itself is relatively simple, there's not a whole lot going on to it besides you got steel and concrete, and then the, the, the hoop and trust system is relatively simple. So the building itself is pretty basic, there isn't a whole lot of ins and outs to it, let's say, versus another commercial building, or if we were to add on to the maintenance shop, for example. So it's, it's pretty simplistic in the design of it, it's just, it needs to be capable of withstanding any sort of flood event.
And we're still gonna be able to hold about four hundred ton of salt, that's what the capacity that we hold now at our shop. You know, and maybe even with this hoop, we give it up and we might even be able to get another hundred ton in there. So, I mean, that'll help save some sort of cost, you know, instead of, you know, hauling it out to the metro bin out there where we hold extra salt.
Justin, anything to add?
Further questions or discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of right-of-way work permit at Sixty-third University Avenue and discussion on parkland.
Could you pull up the conceptual land transfer map, it's part of the agenda? So just as a reminder for everybody of where the Windsor project at the southwest intersection of Sixty-third and, and University stands today, they have submitted their site plan for the project now. They have closed on the property as well. They've been out there doing demolition of the houses and removal of a number of trees out there. They've submitted a grading permit for their property, which would allow them to move forward with their grading plan. They've got the slope agreement resolved with the DOT up of Sixty-third. And so the next phase in the project forum is really to go through planning and zoning to make a recommendation on the site plan and bring that forward to city council. Because they submitted their site plan after January first, they are subject to the new zoning code that went in effect January first. And so there is a brick requirement on the first floor, as well as a quality of material requirements on the rest of the floors, particularly on University Avenue and Sixty-third. The current submission meets that brick requirement on, I believe it's University, and is a little short of it on Sixty-third. And so there may be a variance request because they were really designing to the original standards of last year throughout the process within coming into the new zoning code requirements. So that'll be a decision for the Board of Adjustment to make, whether to potentially grant a variance on the brick requirement, which again, would be just short of the current requirement, I think it's on Sixty-third. Otherwise, it meets those standards and requirements in the zoning code and, and every other way that I've seen, subject to some back and forth that is going on between staff of site plan comments. So there's still some work to be done on that site plan, but things are proceeding forward on all accounts there. So the, the purpose of, it's a separate attachment, I don't, I guess you're just on the packet there, it would be after the site plan. There you go. You can zoom in on that a little bit. So purpose of tonight is, as part of their grading permit, they need to do some grading work on the city property at that hard corner there. And a portion of that city property is outlined in sort of that black L shape. That's the portion that would be proposed to be transferred to the developer as part of a development agreement that's being worked on. But they'd like to move forward with the grading on that property at the same time as they're working on the rest of theirs. And so they've submitted a right-of-way permit to move forward with grading there because this is sort of an unusual right-of-way permit, I just wanted to bring it to council's attention. There would be a tree removed on the south side of the site, the south side of the city's property. And then the grade would be brought down, the trail and the trees along the trail, as well as the city's monument sign would not be impacted as part of their grading. The other piece of this then would be the parkland dedication requirement, which went into effect January first as part of the new zoning code. Because there's over a hundred housing units in this apartment complex, there's a fairly substantial parkland dedication requirement. And then compensation for the city for the proposed property to be transferred, that black outlined L again on the northeast side. And what we have here today then is just sort of a concept for, for council to give us some feedback on, whether that needs to be tweaked, adjusted, or, or move forward with. I'm gonna get up and point at the, the map a little bit here, and sorry, Teresa, I'll try to describe what I'm pointing at.
So the area outlined in purple is essentially excess property for the developer. You can see the dry detention basin in green is outlined there. So there is some significant slope, they've removed all the trees, essentially from here to the east, there's one small row of trees that currently stands today on the very south line against Fox Property. I'm not sure if the intent is that those will be able to stay or not. And then there are trees, mostly scrub trees, a few quality ones from the north on the far west side. And so the developers proposed potential dedication of this entire purple area to the city, potentially use this park or public open space. The developer would retain the responsibility of maintaining this detention bond. And then this would also include a small access up in the street to the south there. So the question of the council really in a few parts here, knowing that we've got Lyons Park already, which is sort of out of sight and difficult to use. Is there interest in seeing a second, larger park that may be able to develop over time? Or in the short term, potentially a small trail system, potentially a connection back to University? So the weather didn't cooperate with us last week, weren't able to get our architect out there to kind of walk the property with us. But conceptually, if this purple area is turned over to the city, create a small trail connection off of the street. You may have some slopes, but somewhat usable property that you could reforest with some higher quality trees on the east. And then you'd have this detention basin that the city wouldn't be responsible for maintaining, but would have ownership of, which doesn't really add anything to the parkland. But if you look to the north here, you've got about six properties that are long and narrow in nature, a single-family residential, which doesn't align with their future land use map or the plans of the city. Talks about transitional nature of those properties as they come available moving forward towards mixed use. And so for that to come to reality, there's probably a need for the city to assist or actively take part in eventually acquiring these houses as they become available, consolidate them into a large enough pieces of property that they could be redeveloped. It's in the next use or additional apartment complexes. And as part of that, the city would then have the opportunity to utilize, utilize the economies of scale that come with one larger detention bond as opposed to multiple smaller detention bonds. And then potentially add to this park space on the eastern side to turn that into something that might be a little bit more useful for recreation purposes. There may also be a possibility to create that trail connection from the south, even there to Sixty-third Street, or potentially north to, to University. The property is designed today, you have a ten-foot buffer between these garages and the property owner. A single-family house there off to the west, that house is pretty much on that property line. So you have a fairly narrow corridor right here between the garages on that property, or then it does open back up closer to University. But an immediate trail connection, I don't have an answer for whether that's a possibility today. But if these properties were eventually acquired, certainly at that point, you'd probably create that trail connection up to University. So looking at trying to accomplish a few things potentially with taking a property like this, certainly some of it is longer-term in nature, it will speculative. But there appears to be at least some opportunity to get some parklands for the city and creates some redevelopment opportunities longer term. But it comes with some shorter-term challenges and probably some property that doesn't have a high-hat utility as it stands today. So that's what I'm looking for later to be back on from the city council this evening, whether conceptually you're interested in moving forward with a land swap like this. uh, where we should go with more of a conventional parkland dedication requirements, uh, or if the developer's interested in cash payments in lieu of, uh, parkland dedication.
How much property are we talking about in that purple area?
I believe it's just under an acre. I think it says in there, it's very small print. Um, yeah, thirty thirty-three thousand plus forty thousand plus seven thousand square feet. So we're looking at, uh, about eighty thousand square feet.
And then the, the houses that you were talking about um, on the top of the purple lines. Yep, there. Those are ones that are on university now or where are those? Those are the ones that are kind of further back.
Some of them are pretty far back. The one immediately adjacent to this property is very far back. It's kind of where those garages start. Um, some of the other ones, as you go further west or closer to the street, but they're all very long, narrow properties that, um, go from university all the way down to that detention pond.
When you talk about reforesting, would that be, that would be the city paying and planting trees, not the uh, developer?
Well, I think the, when the development agreement comes in front of you, you'll have the opportunity to, to weigh in on exactly what you might want to see on that. There is draft in that development agreement or requirements that the developer plants, uh, fifty trees, overstory and understory trees on their site plan. Uh, if they're unable to do that, uh, then they would need to provide the difference in those trees to the city to be planted elsewhere. Um, you know, if we had a vision for what we wanted to use this property for, you know, those trees could be planted here and where there could be some sort of a grading requirement, um, as part of the developer's workout here to make this property a little bit more accessible than it stands today. Uh, again, we haven't had an opportunity to walk out there with our engineer, um, which we want to see the traffic kind of at uh, four-thirty, uh, in the afternoon, because that's kind of the peak traffic hours is access into here. Uh, and also just to see kind of the, uh, the parkland usability out there. Um, and I should mention, I guess, the one other benefit of eventual acquisition of these six properties north of, uh, the detention pond would create a potential joint access that would be further to the west of this project, uh, because you'll see cars stack up, um, at that stoplight as they're eastbound on university, uh, out to sixty-fourth, sixty-fifth, sixty-sixth, even sometimes kind of depends as traffic, uh, adjusts and there's been some construction in the last year, but anything we can do to eventually move the access point for this apartment complex, uh, from the proposed location, eventually further to the west is going to be a benefit for, for all parties involved.
And she said the water retention pond would not be our responsibility to maintain?
Uh, correct. There'd be a stormwater maintenance agreement with the developer for the maintenance of the pond. Um, now if that pond was expanded in scope, uh, you know, I think that would need to be renegotiated at that point, but, uh, what's being designed today would not be the city's responsibility.
And do those, um, agreements usually include things like, I'm, I'm thinking there's parking just offside there. I'm thinking that there's a big opportunity for litter, uh, to collect there. And if this is a parkland, then it's constantly so would that type of maintenance also be part of that agreement or is that?
I think what's proposed is just the actual structural maintenance of
Gotcha.
the stormwater requirements. Um, but I think you've hit on a point of uh, of this parkland. It is a little tucked away. Um, you could certainly get some passerby's and some transient pedestrian foot traffic flow into this area. I think, you know, Bob would testify, probably there's been some of that activity in the past as it's been you know, wooded area sort of secluded, um, adjacent to a larger piece of property that was wooded and, and not heavily utilized other than on Sunday mornings. So some of that exists today, I guess.
So if we were to, at some point in time, acquire these uh, this, these properties, what would that do to like our taxing, property taxes, that type of thing? Because I'm assuming it would go to nothing?
Yeah. So, uh, we have in the urban renewal plan that we're setting a public hearing for tonight. Um, uh, we're creating the ability to acquire properties along university avenue. Um, those that have been designated through previous planning efforts as transitional properties, ones that would eventually move to mixed use. Um, if the city were to acquire them for the duration it's being held by the city, uh, that would revert the tax base of that property to zero taxable value. Um, at which point eventually the property would be presumably demolished and redeveloped and back on the tax roll at a higher value than than it sits today as a large piece of property that just has a single-family residence on it.
You go through that.
So temporarily.
Temporary.
While we own it.
And then, and then who's going to own it after like
We would sell.
Sell it to the developer to
The big challenge of these properties and the redevelopment, in my experience at least, is that a developer doesn't have necessarily the patience to try and acquire six pieces of property to, to redevelop it. Um, the city has the long-term interest in, you know, seeing the vision for the university corridor come to fruition and uh, the financial ability to acquire those and, and wait as the additional properties would come available. And so, you know, developer would be concerned about having one or two property holders pulled out then fifteen years, uh, which is certainly a possibility and the property owner's right. Um, which would forestall the developments, whereas, you know, the city could you know, clear the property, use it as parkland or find some other use, uh, until such time as enough of it can be aggregated that it can be sold to the developer and and redeveloped at the highest and best use at that point.
This is a relatively long-range plan, yes?
It, it could take anywhere from five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, uh, to get all six of those properties acquired, even longer. It really depends on the property owners. We're not talking about eminent domain here. Um, haven't spoken to the property owners about selling, so it's really just planning for the future at this point.
Are you getting all the feedback, you thought? So in short, it's seven, the, the land swap is seven thousand square feet for the eighty?
Yeah. And if you want to break it out specifically for what the developer will need as part of their project was that part parcel A, uh, the L-shaped portion there again. Um, we've just written this up as, you know, foot to foot, um, transfers. That'd be everything west of that blue line essentially. That's really the usable space. Uh, and I would say the, the city's property there where the sign is at, um, there really isn't any utility for the city beyond maybe public art. You can't develop that property in isolation because of the slope and the proximity to the intersection. Um, it serves well for a monument sign on the trail. Um, but it's, it's relatively inaccessible. Uh, and that's what we're getting in exchange essentially, I would say, as well as a piece of inaccessible property that might serve a greater good. Uh, and then the parkland dedication, uh, would sort of cover the rest of that purple outlined area.
And previously this property belonged to, I mean, before it belonged to the developer, it belonged to the church, right? Okay.
So don't need any answers, um, this evening, other than confirmation that you're okay with moving forward with the right-of-way permit, uh, which again would be a demolition of that one tree on the south side uh, and the reduction of the grade, uh, to align with the developer's plans. You'd actually approve the transfer of that property at a future date. It's part of a development agreement. Um, but not hearing anybody voice, um, opposition to this, I guess we'd plan on continuing to refine this, uh, parkland dedication idea, uh, and bring that forward to you as part of the development agreements, uh, barring other feedback.
Guess I'm not sold on the parkland and the, the houses and, and all of that yet. Kind of, this was kind of hard to read, especially since still blurry from the motion sickness meds. So, um, this was not very easy to, to read. Um, so the right-of-way work permit I'm, I'm on board with, um, be, just because basically if they mess up anything that's already there, they're going to fix it, correct?
There's a bond requirement as part of that right-of-way work.
So, and I think that that's a pretty safe thing to do.
Oh, as far as the, um, the actual action tonight, it's just the, um,
Yeah, a motion for staff to approve the right-of-way permit, um, work would be a good insufficient direction in that regard.
Okay. All right. Um, before we get to that, um, I mean, as far as the parkland goes, council, what, I mean, what direction, other thoughts on where you would like to see the, the parkland go? As far as the long-term plan, would you like to, um, go in the route of a more traditional? I don't know. What, what were the other options you mentioned?
Uh, the developer has, uh, the right under the code to provide usable parkland to dedicate to the city. So, um, I think, you know, the city could make a case. They need to identify alternative piece of property on their probably red outlined piece of property to use as parkland dedication for the uh, residents that, uh, would be living in this project, or the city could consider a cash in lieu of a parkland dedication uh, of a like amount. Uh, we cannot require that, um, but the developer may propose that as an alternative to dedicating a portion of the property for parkland. Again, comes back to the idea that oftentimes subdivisions are small enough that the amount of property that they would have to get it dedicate in and of itself is fairly small and, and you wind up with something with low utility, um, because of that.
But if the, if that route, if we went that route, that land in turn would then not be ours, right? And then as far as the, the long-term planning about what we would like university to turn into, that would be somewhat harder than.
Would not be in our control.
All right.
And you said that you weren't able to get the engineer, whoever, architect or whoever, to get out there just to even look at.
We're going to go back out there. The plan is next Friday. Now we're going to meet out there Friday as part of our, uh, work meeting at Colby Park, but it was raining. Uh, we didn't want to slop in the mud out there. So we'll try again Friday. I really just want the architect's, uh, opinion on what could that space be used for? Is it simply a walking trail? Maybe is creating some more connectivity between the neighborhood and university? Do we think that we could flatten the area out potentially with some additional property to the north or the south, uh, to create more usable recreation space, more active recreation than, than a walking trail or, uh, kind of a nature preserve area. Um, that's the kind of feedback I'm looking from, from our architect Nate, uh, who's been working on Colby Park over there. Uh, in addition, just understanding a little bit better and for everybody to see the traffic patterns there at about four-thirty. Um, as they stop and go in front of the site, so.
Well, um, how about that happens and then circle back with council as far as what Nate has to say?
Can do.
Good. Well, is there a motion on the, uh, right-of-way work permit?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Living?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Uh, seven D, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh one and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six related to rental housing.
Second.
Aaron?
Uh, just a, just a reminder from the last meeting, um, one of the things that city staff has been focused on is enforcement mechanisms for the rental housing code. And so this was just one thing that is allowed by Iowa code, but it requires it to be adopted into the city ordinances in order for that to be an available, um, method of enforcement. And so um, what, what staff is asking is to incorporate that into the city's code.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Yes.
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 Uh, reports, Ms. Harms.
Good evening, everybody. Again, uh, MAC tomorrow morning, we're going to have some conversations with legislators, I hope. Um, predominantly, I think we'll be focusing on the stormwater legislation that passed the House after being amended. Um, interesting, um, discussion with our flood plan and how, um, that stormwater bill would uh, probably had some, have some significant impacts on our community, um, if that legislation passes as is. Um, otherwise, um, I think that's all I, we've got, we've got some, some stuff in the works for Windsor Wonderland, so that's awesome. And um, I feel like we're ahead of the ballgame, but otherwise I think that's all I've got. Thanks, everybody.
Campbell?
Um, Bravo met March sixth and in the current grant cycle, there, it includes an opportunity for seventy-five percent grant funding for a comprehensive art plan. So met today with AJ and Mayor Jones and, um, Ms. Harms to talk about, um, uh, a desire to pursue a public art plan with some grant funding. So AJ's working on that application and getting all the ducks in a row so we can meet the deadline, um, early in April, but, um, I think it's a perfect timing with the public art conversation around Casey's. And then we know that from little brother and a few other locations around the city that there is an appetite for some art. Uh, Susan and I met with new prospective members for special events committee. And twenty twenty-four special events plans are well underway. Volunteer opportunities are available online. Volunteer and volunteer often, please and thank you. Um, shout out to Susan once again for her fundraising efforts. Uh, Susan, uh, because of Susan, special events this year are going to be even bigger and better than ever. And, um, uh, she even was working on her, while on vacation with her limited data connectivity, managed to secure some more funds to be donated to our, um, our effort. So and I believe we finally figured out the right size for the banners, for the banner poles. Uh, so I'll get the artwork moved up and, uh, those will be in Jason's hands soon. So we know that they will last at least one week in the weather. I'll guarantee them for two weeks. That's all I've got.
Hello.
I was all, uh, excited about being able to go to the Capitol last week for our MAC meeting at seven-thirty in the morning, but that was scuttled and so we'll be meeting virtually uh, tomorrow, uh, speaking with legislators. And I was able to invite, uh, the two legislators that impact Windsor Heights uh, to that meeting. I'd not heard back from them, whether or not they'll be able to do that. Um, that plus I'm, I'm extremely interested in what Joseph may have to say about Dart. Uh, because that's, yeah, it's nothing today. Oh, okay. That would conclude my, and thank you, uh, again, Adam, for meeting with me. I appreciate that.
Jones?
Uh, yeah, like I said, that nothing new beyond, we had a meeting and same conversation essentially. And, uh, we're still discussing options for funding, um, but we don't know what that's finally going to look like and we're going to have, you know, separate budgets for a while until we figure out which one we're actually going to go with.
Scary.
Um, I attended Metro Waste's executive board meeting on the sixth. Lauren and I met with two residents that are interested in becoming members of the special events committee. Um, I emailed their information to the mayor and will, um, once a few little paperwork's issues are filled out, uh, we should have that information to council at the next meeting. I have a Metro Waste meeting this Wednesday. Then on Friday morning, we have a food truck alley meeting. And then I emailed the information I received from Clive about their food truck pricing today. Sorry about the lack of getting it to you before vacation, but um, we've had several volunteers sign up for not only the stream cleanup, but also for movies in the park already. So I'm really super excited about that. Um, I'll be a Debbie Downer here now, but it would be great to have some volunteers sign up for our Earth Day event from twelve PM to three PM because we haven't had anybody volunteer yet for that. A reminder that the firefighter association's annual Easter egg hunt is on March thirtieth at Colby Park. And, um, since it's via Zoom, you can attend both of these events, but there will be another talk with uh, officials held, uh, by the chamber on March thirtieth, starting at eight-thirty AM. I think the firefighter association one starts right at nine AM. So make sure you are there because all of the eggs will be gone in thirty seconds or less. So it, it's, you know,
It is a frenzy.
It is. It's like hungry, hungry hippos, I swear. Um, so that the, uh, the talk with officials is free to attend, but you have to register if you're going to attend in person. Um, or if you are going to attend via Zoom, so that you can be sent a Zoom link. Uh, the chamber is ending their TRC sponsorship drive, March thirty-first. So if you would like to sponsor an event or know of a business So if you would like to sponsor an event or know of a business that should be asked about sponsorships, contact Gina or Tiffany with the the Chamber. And then I apologize, I'm trying to get through the emails that I've gotten since I was on vacation. But it's slow going, so I apologize if I haven't gotten back to anybody or everybody yet. That's it.
Hey, Susan, just a couple of quick things. I know in the past when we did keep Windsor Heights beautiful, did the stream cleanup. Not only did they help, but we had the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts from the local areas that were helpful. And volunteered, so those might be a couple of groups to. To reach out to as well. And then I saw somebody post on social media that they would be there. I don't know the name, but that might be. I don't, you know, I don't know, just maybe a follow-up on that, so.
I'll look at. I will be there. And then I know that Jason has been in touch with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. For the stream cleanup. We've also gotten in touch with MetroNet, Mid-American. And I feel like I'm forgetting one business, but. I haven't looked at my papers since I got back from vacation. To kind of update, but I know that they were talking, those two businesses were talking and then the Boys and Girl Scouts Jason had already confirmed with. So we have them coming out and I think there's at least five or six people that have signed up too that I've gotten to sign up from. For the genius.
AJ, anything from you?
One update and I see Mark is online as well, so he may have something to add, but we did have a conversation. Several weeks ago with the foundation regarding the construction at Colby Park. And kind of the timeline for that constructive work to be done, as well as the impact that may grow. As we look at some of these grant projects in the food truck courts or the food truck alley. And so did hear back today, it sounds like they're planning not to move forward with fireworks for twenty twenty-four. As part of the Fourth of July, recognizing kind of the large draw that event has. And how that creates some challenges with the construction that's out there today and and will continue through the Fourth of July. So. They're still planning on holding all their other events, the summer ice cream social and the concerts. They're, I think, excited for the improvements that are taking place out there and looking forward to having the fireworks in twenty twenty-five. But recognizing, I think, the construction that's out there this year and the impact, they're going to hold off on the fireworks this year. You know, I think the the request from the foundation for for funding wasn't specific to the fireworks. But more so just as far as all the events that they helped put on. So certainly appreciate any feedback people might have if there is. Wanting to reconsider that. Otherwise, I would presume, I guess, that the five thousand dollars that the council has allocated for this year to the foundation would. Continue to go forward with them, but I think they'd be anxious to know if there was any changes to that, just so they can budget and plan accordingly for their other events.
So they are still going to have July fourth there. They're in a concert. They're just not going to do the fireworks. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that I. Cause I hear.
It's not entirely sure to me, but maybe Councilmember Libby or Mark could weigh in further on on what the plans would be for the fourth.
I think we'll let Mark speak to that.
So right now, excuse me. Right now, yes, we're going to continue on with our band on. July fourth, we have are researching and seeing if there's any additional. Possible activities that could take place. Probably would not be down at the park. We're looking at. Sherwood Forest as a possibility to do some other things, but at this very moment, we do not have anything in concrete. Fashion that would that I can bring forward.
So I guess the only other note I'd have just is that. Once Adam is back, we'll make sure we reach out to you, Mark, and kind of talk about how to. Publicize the intentions for the Fourth of July this year. Just want to make sure that. The public's informed and aware of of what will and will not be happening down at the park so that they can. Plan their Fourth of July weekend as well.
And that's correct. For us on that, all of our. Promotional materials and social media outlets. Will be promoting and letting people know that there are no fireworks, but. That the park is going to look fantastic for twenty twenty-five. In that it is our intentions to come back with band and fireworks. Fourth of July, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Living?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The other sizes is with your one that's on the south side of the street. The other one is.
Yeah, it's on the south side. I saw them on the way out. Double check that. Coffee chat today. I didn't see the cops. New Casey?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they closed the factory.